Good morning. I would like to call to order the regular meeting noticed for today. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Councilmember Shepard Rami.
Here.
Councilmember Udi.
Here.
I understand Vice Mayor Tault has an excused absence for today.
Thank you.
And Mayor Jacobowski.
Present. Thank you. The agenda is posted seventy-two hours prior to each meeting at the following locations. City Hall, the Crowell Public Library, and the Stoneman Building. The agenda is also posted on the city's website. The city welcomes public input. At this time, the public may address the city council on items that are not on the agenda. Pursuant to state law, the city council may not discuss or take action on issues not on the meeting agenda. To ensure that everyone, including those joining us remotely, are able to hear all speakers clearly, please speak directly into the microphone. Please note that all comments are limited to two minutes and will be timed by city staff. I would now like to ask City Clerk Baker to explain how public comment will work.
Thank you, Mayor. For each item on the agenda, there will be time for public comment. We'll accept comments in three ways. First, we will take in-person comments for each item. Please follow the speaker card and turn it in to me if you wish to speak on an item. There's a countdown timer that is displayed on the projector screen to help speakers keep track of the remaining time to speak. Second, we will then ask for comments from our Zoom participants. When we ask for public comments via Zoom, there are two ways you can let us know you would like to speak. First, you can use the raised hand feature, which is a button that's found by clicking on participants and then clicking on raised hand on the bottom right side of the screen. Please do not use this feature until we have asked for public comment, or else we may not see it or know which item you're asking to speak on. As a second option, you can send a message using the chat box saying you'd like to speak on a particular agenda item. Comments will be accepted only until the end of the public comment period for that item. Finally, I will then read into the record any public comments received by email for that particular item. Due to technical limitations associated with gathering, printing, and sorting emailed public comment, the city has instituted a 3:00 PM cutoff the day before a Friday city council meeting for emailed public comments. This is to ensure there is sufficient time to gather and present the emailed comments at the city council meeting. Any comments received after 3:00 PM will be included in the public comment record but will not be read at the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anyone here wishing to speak. Do we have any public comment requests that were submitted electronically?
I did not receive any emailed public comments for today's meeting. Let me give our Zoom participants just a moment. I'm not seeing any raised hands, no request for comment at this time.
Thank you. Do I have a motion and a second to wait for the readings?
So.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong.
Yes.
Councilmember Shepard Rami.
Yeah.
Councilmember Udi.
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. New business, item number one. Approval of a request for proposal for the city manager recruitment. May we please have a presentation from Director Guerrero? Good morning.
Good morning. Randall's, what do you have? Maybe very low. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Good morning, Mayor and council members. Before you this morning is the approval of a request for proposal for the city manager recruitment. Staff is requesting authorization from the city council to release a request for proposal, also known as an RFP, for a professional recruiting firm to conduct the recruiting process for the city manager position. A permanent city manager recruitment process can take between five to seven months. Staff has identified seven prominent professional recruiting firms that we will directly send out, send the RFP to. We will be posting it on the city's website and other websites as appropriate. The professional recruiting firm will develop a position profile that reflects the expectations of the city council and the community, conduct outreach and recruitment, community outreach as directed by the city council, candidate evaluations and interviews, reference checks, and background investigations. The recruiter will work with the city council on the negotiations of salary and compensation packages, and the recruiter will complete the process by advising the other candidates of the selection and any other closing detail. The selected firm will be required to enter into an agreement for services with the city. A standard professional services agreement has been attached to the RFP for reference but can be modified as needed, subject to the approval of the city attorney. The fiscal impact is unknown at this time. The steps to move forward with the RFP process are recommended as follows. To direct staff to release an RFP for the professional recruiting firm on October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. The deadline for proposal would be November seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two. The city council to appoint an ad hoc committee to select the recruiting firm and bring their recommendation to the December fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two city council meeting for approval of a contract and appropriation of funds. That concludes my report. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Huang, any questions?
No, no question. Thank you.
Councilmember Udi, any questions?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Shepard Rami, any questions?
Yes, please, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Director Guerrero, for the report and starting this out. It's an important process for a city. I think we all recognize that. And I appreciate having you on board and leading the effort. My question just has to do with the timing merely of what you've outlined. Because I'm concerned, obviously, we want to get as many of the firms that you reached out to that are qualified to put in. I don't know if it's a bid. I don't know what the correct proposal, I guess is a better word for it, about what they intend to do and strategies so we can get the benefit of as many. And I know recently we've been faced with several things before us that only had one or two, you know, actual proposals come back because of, who knows why, the environment, I'm going to say, and particularly because this is an employment contract, or eventually will be an employment contract. I'm concerned that eighteen days is not enough, and I would, I know we have also Thanksgiving that month, so not much will probably be done by anybody by then, but hopefully it's a wrapping up time for most groups. So I just wanted, my concern was whether you think eighteen days is really enough to get all of those that you've reached out to and perhaps others to turn in their proposal, or would it be better to extend it to the end of the month and we'd still have time by our December meeting?
So we can, the date is flexible, obviously. I've actually had three recruiting firms that had reached out to me shortly after the announcement of the former city manager departing from the agency. So I know at least we'll have three in fairly quickly. The deadlines were set based on previous recruitment timelines. Obviously, this timing is a little differently occurring right around major holidays, so we can definitely push those dates out if that's the desire of the council.
All right. And thank you. And also, given the climate of the employment market is, you know, had so many issues right now that I know it's not accepting the bid, but at the same time, people are extremely busy with trying to fill places. And I know we've had problems getting people to bid on contracts here because they're otherwise so stressed for work that they already have. So that was my only concern. But I am pleased to know that you've reached out already and we have contacted, unsolicited us, you since that departure, so I'm hopeful that it'll be a good process. Thank you.
That's it? I have just one question, although it's not explicitly stated here. Am I correct in presuming that the ad hoc committee is to be comprised of two city council members?
Correct.
Thank you. I have no further questions, and at this point, I'd like to open it up for public comment. There is nobody here to speak. Do we have anyone online?
Let me give just a moment to see if anybody raised their hand from Zoom. No raised hands, no request for comment on this item.
Great, thank you. At this point, I'd like to bring it back to council for discussion. Councilmember Huang.
No, no comments, but I would just propose to appoint Councilmember Shepard Rami and Vice Mayor Tault, if you ask. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Udi?
Yeah, my thoughts on the liaisons would be Councilmember Wong and Vice Mayor Tault, because those are the only two people that are sure to be here sixty days from now.
Thank you. Councilmember Shepard Rami?
I'm fine with Councilmember Wong and Vice Mayor Tault being the committee since I am up for reelection, and I just would ask the council to consider extending the deadline to the end of the month of November, just so we have more time. And Lizette can work with more should we have only three. And you know, whenever we send out RFPs, we need to get several to really get the best product and the best qualified people, just given the time. I'd like to extend it to the thirtieth, puts it the middle of the week after Thanksgiving, so it actually gives them business days after to maybe consider a proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll make my comment, and then we'll go back to that deadline issue. I concur with Councilmember Udi's logic with Councilmembers Huang and Tault, and I am comfortable with the extension. How do you feel, Councilmember Huang?
I'm okay with the extension, but I'm not okay with the nomination. That's all.
Okay.
No. Councilmember Udi?
I'm okay with the extension.
Okay. Councilwoman Shepard Rami?
I'm okay with the extension, and I appreciate Councilmember Wong's confidence. But I think it's appropriate to have, and then we can revisit the subject with the new council once they're appointed. I believe they should have input too on selecting the ad hoc members other than the mayor. So I think it might change anyway in December, Councilmember Wong. So it would be fine to go ahead with the two sure things. How about that?
We'll get to that in a minute. And I really appreciate your comments, Councilmember Shepard Rami. When those of us were attending city council meetings prior to us being elected, we certainly put in a plea that the new council select the city manager, but that was done for us in advance. So I am very pleased that there's that thoughtfulness of including the new members and choosing who will be the city manager.
May I say something? Would it be more comfortable if we have Councilmember, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Tault appointed at this time and leave the other one open? If Councilmember Wong would prefer not to be involved again, he works full-time and he was involved with the last recruitment. So I understand his reluctance to do this again, and then just make it part of the agenda for December. If our acting city manager is okay with that, that that would be one of the agenda items then at that time.
Yeah, but another question too. When does the interviewing process start?
Four months from now.
Yeah.
I mean, you have to select the recruiter. The recruiter has to go to market.
So my question is that.
Three, four months away.
You know, maybe we should wait for a new council to.
Well, at this point.
November meeting, because then the election will be returned.
But there won't be.
We're being asked for two, so I think at this point, we just need to determine if we're going to submit two, if we're going to submit one. Are you willing to have your name be presented?
No.
Okay, so going back to Councilmember Shepard Rami's request that we appoint or ask Vice Mayor Tault only to be one of the ad hoc members, he too may refuse. We don't know what he's feeling, so is that acceptable?
Why don't we just release the RFP and then in December, select who the council liaisons are going to be to work with the recruiter?
Is there any need for council members to be involved in the release process?
Um, not for the RFP.
Okay.
There is one item, though. We were actually hoping to bring back the selection of the firm in December, so that does require a review of the proposals that we receive back by this subcommittee of the council.
Thank you for that point. So in going with the proposed action that's being discussed with council right now, that would delay that process. So if we have to wait to select the second liaison.
Again, I think that the election results will be in prior to our November meeting, because I believe we meet next on November ninth, which is the day after the election.
Problem is, they won't be certified by then.
I know, but we're taking informal action. Well, we're taking a formal action of appointing, I guess, Steve. Councilmember Wong's point is whether I can be appointed as the second. And so that could be done even without certified, because we're not putting a new board member per se. The issue that was proposed is whether I will be reelected. And so I'm sitting and continuing possibly council member. So I think that's what he's saying.
Councilmember Udi, go ahead.
As I understand that this is to, the liaisons will help select which firm we're going to use as a recruiter. You know, so I would, this council is going to be in place until December fourteenth. So I would be comfortable with Councilperson Shepard Rami and Mr. Tault being involved with selecting the recruiting firm.
Bye.
Because that's a recommendation. It'll come to council in December, and we're all still active in that.
Well, we will not be in the December meeting.
At the very beginning of the meeting, we are.
Yeah.
So I'm comfortable with Vice Mayor Tault and Shepard Rami being involved with selecting the recruiter, because that's not selecting the city manager. That's just selecting a recruiter. And to me, you're going to find, well, you'll probably get four bids, and three of the four are qualified to do the work. So it's just, you know, picking one. So that's, that's.
So.
Issue for me.
I'm hearing at this point, the two issues to be addressed are Councilmember Shepard Rami and Vice Mayor Tault, and extending through the end of November, is that what you're proposing?
The.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I move to one, direct staff to release the RFP to solicit responses for a professional recruiting firm to conduct a search for a city manager, extending that process to the end of November, and to appoint Vice Mayor Tault and Councilmember Shepard Rami to serve as ad hoc committee to help select the recruiting firm and make the recommendation for the full city council approvals.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong.
Yes.
Councilmember Shepard Rami.
Yes.
Councilmember Udi.
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number two, an adoption of a resolution, number R dash twenty-two dash forty-three, pertaining to modification of work schedules and employee salary and benefits. Director Guerrero, again.
Good morning. Before you this morning is the adoption of resolution number R twenty-two dash forty-three. I'm ending the unrepresented employees' salary and benefit schedule for the period covering July first, twenty-twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, pertaining to modification of work schedules. In order to give the city manager flexibility in hopes of hiring and retaining quality employees, staff recommends council adopt resolution number R twenty-two dash forty-three, which would allow the city manager to modify work schedules for unrepresented full-time employees. That concludes my report. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Shepard Rami, any questions?
No, I appreciate that we have situations that may require some other, and I believe most importantly is to bring well-qualified staff to join our great team. And so I appreciate this coming forward, and we can be flexible, so I would support this. Thank you.
Thank you.
That wasn't a question. And, and do you have anything to add? Director Guerrero, sorry, I skipped to the end. I apologize.
So we do have a Parks and Public Works Director that is, that we have actually sent a conditional job offer to. And one of the conditions was having a flexible work schedule, so this would allow us to be able to bring her onboard and satisfy all of her concerns.
Thank you.
And it would also allow the city manager the flexibility to work with other employees as well.
Thanks so much. I appreciate the information. Thank you.
Councilmember Udi?
No questions?
Councilmember Huang?
No questions. Thank you.
I just have one or two. In mentioning the new director of Public Works, I certainly understand the request for the scheduled accommodation. Will this person be able to attend evening city council meetings and be involved with at least the Public Safety Commission, which does meet in the evening?
Yes, it will.
Wonderful.
And her work schedule actually more closely aligns to what the public work staff is working right now, so.
Absolutely. For the routine schedule, as I had shared with our acting city manager, when I was part of the ad hoc work group about seven years ago when we studied City Hall, it was our recommendation at that time that the director align with bulk of the staff. So I think there appears to be a lot of support for that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's see. Do we have no one present? Do we have any public comments online?
Let me give Zoom folks just a moment to raise their hand. We do have a couple of attendees. No raised hands, no comment on this item.
Thank you. Bringing it back for discussion, Councilmember Shepard Rami?
No, I am looking forward to having a Parks and Public Works Director, and I appreciate the efforts in a difficult job market that Director Guerrero and our acting city manager, Rueda, have gone. And I think that staff is excited as well to have leadership in that position and move forward. And I will thank publicly, because I don't know if we get a chance to see him again, but it's been a pleasure to work with our interim director, Newman. And I appreciate and fully support this effort and the change that will be needed to have a wonderfully qualified person into that important role.
Thank you. Councilmember Udi?
No comments.
Councilmember Huang?
I concur with Councilmember Shepard Rami. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no comments. Do we have a motion?
I move, I'm going to need the glasses for this. I move to adopt resolution number R dash twenty-two dash forty-three, amended the unrepresented employee's salary and benefit schedule for the period covering July one, twenty-twenty-two through June thirty, twenty-twenty-four, pertaining to modification of work schedules.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepard Rami?
Yes.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Agenda item number three, adoption of resolution R dash two-two dash four, four-two, rescinding resolution number R two-two dash three-four, changing the location of city council and advisory body meetings. City Clerk Baker, would you please give us a presentation?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Jacobowski and council members. So I'm back again to do another meeting location change. This is actually rescinding the resolution that made changes, so this will be pulling everybody back to their original locations as determined earlier this year when you did all of the advisory body updates. We bring this back a little bit earlier than expected, because at our September fourteenth council meeting, there was quite a bit of technological issues that resulted largely from the amount of people we had here. And with the election this year, we do expect our November and December meetings to have more people attending, so we wanted to avoid that issue. And count and staff has been able to update council chambers to enable hybrid meetings. So our recommendation is to resend resolution number R dash twenty-two dash thirty-four, which would return everybody to their original meeting locations. After public noticing deadlines for the newspaper, we did hear from DRC that they actually would prefer to stay here in the bathroom. So the current resolution in front of you would move them back to council chambers, which was their normal location. But I do have a substitute resolution here with me if moving them, keeping them here in the bathroom is something council would like to entertain. If so, we can hand these out, and you guys can make your motion based off of this.
Thank you very much. Questions from Councilmember Udi?
No questions.
Councilmember Shepard Rami?
I do have a question. I guess it can be addressed by City Clerk Baker. So the design review committee, my understanding is that our director Figueroa did reach out to the commissions under his purview, and they were the ones, the commissioners, that were asked, and there was not a comment or such a request from planning commission.
Correct. Planning Commission chose to stay in council chambers. Yes.
And I didn't know the same, if there had been any outreach to, it occurred to me after my conversation with Director Figueroa, was there a similar outreach to Public Safety Commission? I know the library typically.
No, because since we just changed their meeting location earlier this year, I guess confirmed their meeting location as the bathroom along with library and recreation, I did not reach out to them independently. The reason we reached out to planning commission and DRC again is because some members had made comments that they liked the bathroom. So that was why we reached out to them, but we did not reach out to the others.
Okay, so assuming, I'm going to presume that it's not an issue, but I would like just contact be made to the chairs, if you would, because I do think we need to respect what the volunteers, and some of those commissions actually have more interaction, particularly with, I think what prompted design review commission was they come in with boards and plans, and they need more room than we have to do, to work with residents to reach the best results.
Yeah.
And I don't think it'll be an issue with those other groups, but I just wanted to make sure that we check with the chairs and vice chairs and have everybody on board. And if there is anything else, I'd appreciate it if you bring it back to us. But as it stands, I'm fine with going with design review committee only being the present exception.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Huang, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
I have one. I had certainly been an advocate for staying in this room because of space and actually comments that were made to me by individuals about coming out of COVID. And I know there are some members of the different bodies that feel that way. So if we were to make the accommodation for DRC and any other potential group that would like to stay here, would that be then considered permanent until changed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone electronically wishing to speak on this?
Yes, we do. Do you use the timer? Mr. John Dustin?
Good morning, Council. Yeah, I'm just wanting to share. My experience was not that we were, that I was personally given the choice between the bathroom or council chambers. I was just sort of asked if I would mind going to the council chambers, and I agreed to that. But I really didn't know that staying in the bathroom was an option. And I think Councilmember Shepard Rami's point is very well taken. When you have full-size plans, the table space in the bathroom is much more amenable to reviewing documents like that. So I would suggest explicitly asking that again of all the planning commissioners, because they may also have had the same misunderstanding that I did, that, that I didn't know that the bathroom was still an option. So just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Any others?
I do not have any other raised hands.
Okay, let's bring it back for discussion. Councilmember Udi?
You know, like, Councilmember Shepard Rami say, I respect the opinions of the volunteers. So if they would like to continue to meet here, I'm for that. If they'd like to go to the council chambers, I'm indifferent. I would leave it to their discretion.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Shepard Rami?
I agree. I just would like to hear, I think, I know there was an effort made, but perhaps it wasn't as well explained. And so I appreciate, I believe, Commissioner Dustin's comments that, you know, they want to have a discussion as well in their group. And I know that City Clerk Baker brought something with the alternative, which was for DRC only. And I don't know whether we then want to, those are the two groups that I'm just concerned about. So I hate to act without getting the full input of the commissioners as well. And I just think it wasn't, it was the way it was probably discussed that wasn't clear enough to the members there to express their opinions. Because I agree that we should, they're volunteers, and they have a different set of circumstances, and they're well aware of their work and where it's best done and to work with residents as well. So those two are the exceptions for me, that I just want to make sure we handle the right way.
I will add a note that earlier this year, one of the changes you made in the code is to change meeting locations by resolution, which can happen immediately as soon as that resolution is adopted. So it's something we can bring back very quickly and make that change, so it won't be a long process.
So can I just ask one more follow-up? So for this, these coming meetings for November, they design review, and I understand we'll have to be in council chambers because it's already been noticed?
Yes, so their newspaper publishing deadlines for the public hearing is further out than our agenda, so they publish that as council chambers already. So the November second meeting has to be in council chambers. If you adopt the substitute resolution before you, then their second DRC meeting of November could be back here in the bathroom.
Okay, and from then.
The planning commission, because they're not on this, will be in council chambers until that resolution comes back if they want to.
Well, to your point, did you, okay, did you list, planning commission hasn't been noticed yet, I'm assuming?
No. No, because they're at the end of the month.
Right. I don't even know what the date is for their November meeting. I'm sorry off the top of my head.
Moved earlier, I believe, in that week since Thanksgiving. I think it may be Monday of that week.
Oh, the same week. Okay, I understand. Thank you, Mayor. I forgot. That's right. So the tradition is to do that Monday, but we won't. Oh, the same week. Okay, I understand. Thank you, mayor. I, I forgot. That's right. So the tradition is to do it that Monday, but we won't, oh, we will meet prior to that.
We will.
But will we meet before the newspaper deadline? Um, because is the newspaper deadline the Friday before?
Director Figueroa, they'd be meeting on November twenty-first. Is that the?
I'm just trying to figure out so we can actually, um, have a discussion.
The Monday before Thanksgiving?
Correct. And we still have time. The, uh, newspaper notifications aren't due until a couple of weeks from now.
For, I think it's the Friday.
Yeah, I think.
Before, but it's the Friday before that, right?
So it would be, yeah, it would be after, it would be after the November meeting. So they, their November, their November meeting.
Well, we could discuss this, my point is we could discuss this on November ninth. There can be an informal poll by director Figueroa of planning commission only. And we can discuss this at our November ninth meeting because the deadline for notice is going to be that Friday, the tenth.
No, the actual deadline for notice for a meeting on the twenty-first would be November seventh. Would be the day it's due to the paper.
Yeah, right.
That soon?
Yeah.
Yes, the, the paper only publishes on Thursdays, as you're well aware. So the deadline to get stuff to the papers, the Monday before, we need a ten-day notice typically for public hearings for planning commission. So it's not a week. Ten days before the twenty-first is going to be the eleventh, which means you'd have to publish in the paper on the tenth, which means the deadline to the papers, the seventh. And your meeting is on the ninth.
Right, right. I'm sorry. I thought it was a week.
In a, in a worst possible.
Um, I was just trying to do what was best for them, but.
Public or plan commission may have to stay here November, they're dark in December, and then go back.
Well, they would be in council chambers. That's the point, they'd be in council chambers in November.
Right. What I'm saying is, um, go to council chambers. I met, I said it incorrectly. In November, they would be dark in December, and then should they wish they could return here in January.
Yes.
Councilmember Huang, any questions?
Yes, I have a question for the council. If we deny this motion today, can we make a new motion right away? No, is that? Well, uh, uh, we just need to be able to put the language in the resolution today that, that you would like us to. So if you want to ma- if you want to adopt another resolution today, instead of the one that's in front of you, that's fine. We just have to, uh, write out what you want us to say in this resolution. And so, so we don't need to wait till the next public notice and all that. No, if you want to make changes to this resolution right now, you can make changes to this resolution right now.
But in fairness to the members, we should poll them.
Hmm, or I mean, can we, can we add like a, a language where the, we can poll them and, and they didn't make their own decision or?
The code says that meeting location for advisory bodies needs to be set by council resolution.
Right. So what you, what you could put in there is with regard to the other commissions or the planning commission, let's say it's the planning commission, let's make it a little easier. The plan, the planning commissions, um, will return to the council chambers unless a majority of the counts of the planning commission wishes to remain in the bar.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, so wait, yeah, I mean, so I think we should just change it for the city council and then.
Yeah, I, I, I think the commission should have flexibility on what, where they would like to meet. To your point, they're, they're volunteers. If they would like to meet here, great. Council chambers doesn't matter. Or to me, it doesn't matter.
I mean, we can pull them and then, uh, if they want to go back to council chambers, then we can do that later on.
Or make it so they can do that later. You.
Well, another resolution would come before.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other question?
No more question. Thank you.
I have one. Um, when this was first brought up to me, um, it was, um, as I said, I was sort of the diehard and wanting to stay here. Um, what I was told is, um, the sound is unreliable. And although this is not an issue in the decision, it's quite costly. Do we feel comfortable, even though we have approved the additional money for the sound system here? And I don't know who'd be the appropriate person to answer this. Do we feel confident that keeping bodies here, we won't have problems or compromise sound until we get the replacement sound system here?
Let Director Chung do that one.
You couldn't sit through this one, sorry.
To answer you with confidence, I would say, I, I can't give you a confident answer. What we do know is that it, the last time we had so many issues was really just the amount of bodies that was in the room, in the hallways and the mics just picking up those noises. I would, I feel confident enough to tell you that if we don't get that much of a volume of people, we should be able to accommodate and the AV should work.
So, looking at the timing of the improved AV, um, Murphy's law would have it after we approve this, say in January, um, some wide public interest would be involved in, say, a planning commission issue. Do we know when we will be installing the improved s- sound system so that we don't have issues during a live meeting?
So I heard from our AV company this week, um, timeline is actually looking towards February or even March because of the components that are just not available. There's a huge ba- backlog of these chips, and they're definitely impacted by that. So their timeline was worse comes to worse, should be March, but they're looking at late January to February.
Thank you. That's helpful. Uh, okay, let's see, let's see, we asked our questions. Do we have anyone? We've already heard from the public. We go back to our discussion and, uh, motion. So, councilmember Udi?
Whatever he said.
Second.
Could someone repeat that, please?
Um, okay.
Yeah, well.
Okay, so I have the, uh, revised redline copy, which we all have in front of us of the resolution, and there are two change positions. The first is section three, um, at the bottom of the page for us in red, um, that says, notwithstanding section two, the regular time of the design review committee is the first and third Wednesday of each month at six PM in the bathroom at Cole Public Library effective as of their second meeting in November. Um, so that reflects our discussion. Um, our city attorney also, um, added language to reflect our discussion that we just had about planning commission and, and let, leaving it to them. So the additional text would be, further, the planning commission may continue to meet in the bathroom if the majority of the commission wishes to remain there. And I will get that too. Um, so that would be the new
Section four.
Section four. And we will, um, I propose or I move that we change the resolution language to reflect those two changes.
A second.
One moment.
Uh, Mr. Martin, the attorney did appropriately covered.
Yes, um, so just for the council's edification, it is always perfectly acceptable when introducing a motion to simply say, I move staff's recommendation, um, as an alternative to reading out everything that's been read. Um, so you can either say, I move staff's recommendation, or I move to adopt the resolution as modified, uh, and read into the record by councilman Shepard Rami.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do we have a second on that motion?
Did Ken move? I'm sorry. Did councilmember Udi move?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call, please. Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepard Rami?
Yes.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Can we just say that one?
So.
No.
Yeah, so the, the, my understanding was that the motion was to adopt the resolution as modified.
Yes. Okay, we're all set on that item. Uh, moving forward to item number four. Um, approval of fall twenty-twenty-two public tree removal list. And, uh, we are delighted to have Urban Forester Hall with us. Um, and may we please have your presentation?
Yes, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Okay. Per the city's street tree policy, the public works department is proposing the removal of ten trees. Uh, we did originally have eleven trees on the list, but yesterday I was able to finally meet with a tree remediation and soil compaction specialist and given other circumstances, we revisited tree number four and believe that it could be remediated. So we're asking to remove that from consideration. So the total now is ten. And that concludes my report, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much. Um, councilmember Huang, any questions?
Uh, no, no questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Udi, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Shepard Rami, any questions?
Uh, one question, um, for our new urban forester, Ms. Hall. Um, was number four also the subject of a request by the resident, or was it by somebody else on the street? Just to clarify that I believe council as well as, uh, was directed to city manager and council, but I know that you've, you've seen because you've discussed it.
Originally, I don't know who asked for the tree to be considered for removal. It was prior to my tenure.
Hmm.
Um, but it wasn't the request of the resident that we reconsidered it.
Okay, so then the, the, um, communication that came to council and the acting city manager were, um, was from the residence of the property in front of the city tree. I just was trying to clarify who the residents were.
Yes.
That wrote to us. Thank you very much. That was my, uh, question. Thank you.
Okay, and, um, I think the other two members said they had no questions, correct? Okay, I have no questions. Um, do we have anyone online?
Let me give just a moment for any raised hands. Not seeing any, no requests for comment on this item.
Okay, um, back to the council, councilmember Huang.
Oh, no, um, I don't have any comments. I just want to thank you for, uh, meeting up with the resident and, and removing number four off the list. Thank you.
Okay, and councilmember Udi?
No, I support their professional opinion.
Councilmember Shepard Rami?
Um, I know I was pleased to hear I, um, and meet with, uh, Ms. Hall just generally and welcome her on board. I'm thrilled to have a new urban forester and appreciate the effort that went into presenting this without any errors. It was, uh, great to have, um, a clear and accurate location. So I thank you for that. And a limited number, even better, um, from my perspective. And, um, I agree with all the, um, remarks. I think we had a discussion perhaps about one of them that I wanted to see stay and be watched for a little bit longer too, but I will, uh, go with whatever our urban forester directs us. And I'm also want to thank you for bringing in the outside, um, professional company to look at a new process perhaps that could help some of our ailing oaks. And I'm hoping that, uh, we could, if it seems to be a productive effort, I guess, um, that we could, you could bring something forward to council at a future meeting about, um, perhaps employing that on a, on a number of test specimens that need help in the city. And I'd really appreciate your input on that, whether that might be something that could save some of these ailing trees, because I know we have, we have others in town that weren't on the list that we already postponed on, particularly those oaks. And I'm hoping, um, something can be done to save them. So I appreciate the effort and, uh, the great outside thinking already, um, to try to do something to help our open forest here. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have enjoyed your enthusiasm and getting settled, your creativity and plans for the future. So we appreciate you being here today. And for clarification, you are then recommending one through eleven with the exception of number four, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, um, do I have a motion?
I move to approve the fall, uh, twenty-twenty recommended removal list, except number four, and authorize the director of parks and public works to remove forward to properly remove the trees on the list.
Is there a second?
A second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepard Rami?
Yes.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Um, at this point, uh, any written communications or public writings for distribution? Uh, hearing none. Uh, any public comments at this time, city clerk?
Giving just a moment for our Zoom participants. No requests for comment.
Okay, and, uh, any future items that council would like to add?
Um, I would like to have us, sorry, I have double things here. Um, I would like to see if other, um, council members, uh, would support that we just also spend time or ask staff to evaluate the sound and perhaps the video system in city hall before we all move there over the next couple of months, because I know we've left it long ago. We haven't had a meeting there. And my concern is if we, um, want to have some sort of live feed like we do now, um, I don't know, this is set up obviously for the bathroom, and I don't know if we'll have a similar ability so that our community members can continue to watch this at home, especially should we have some sort of rise in flu or heaven forbid, some other, um, health things in our community this winter. I would like us to be able to continue the ability for the public to call in and also see meetings as are happening. And I think I know that that would take some effort, but it might be an appropriate use of COVID funds. And Paul, I'm sa- I'm sorry, Director Chung has sort of been down this road. I don't know if we can adopt a temporary measure if we need to, to get a camera in there, um, for the short term.
So we actually already have a camera installed.
All right.
That was part of we, the recommendation relocation change. We didn't want to lose that aspect. So we have a camera. We'll be able to run a fully hybrid meeting from council chambers.
Right. Thank you. Then go get Mike. I'm glad you're ahead. I'm, thank you.
Any other items that council members would like to add? Um, I would like to, this is not a future agenda item, but I'd like to remind everybody to vote. Um, this will be our last council meeting before the polls open and close. And please do a review of those registered voters in your home. Uh, sometimes people forget that, um, when their adult children have left the home, they are no longer residents. Uh, I had that happen in my home when we ran for office. My son had moved out. He said, Mom, I'm still registered to vote at home. Uh, may I please vote? And I said, no, that would be unethical and illegal. And if I had said yes, council Udi, councilmember Udi and I would have had a tie vote in the elections. So that's how every single vote counts. And, um, I ask everybody to just review the voters in your home. Uh, with that, do we have any special adjournment from council members? Hearing none. The meeting is closed. Thank you.